We'll now start our workshop. I think we have to have a roll call, don't we, Barbara?
Bachman.
Here.
Penning.
Here.
Gorman.
Here.
Merkel.
Here.
Kelly. Lieberman.
Here.
And Stevens.
I move to excuse Mayor Stevens and Councilmember Kelly.
I'll second the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Jack? You'll take it from here, right?
I do my best. All right, so today we're talking about economic development, just kind of as a point of reference on where we're beginning from. So if you remember, in 2016, we created a five-year economic development plan. And that plan really kind of laid out the future for five years on how we were going to do economic development in the city. A lot of it was plans and building blocks on incorporating what our goals were and how we were going to get there. We laid out tasks for every year. We charted those tasks. Sometimes those tasks come too fresh, and sometimes they don't. But it's our goal, it's our, it's, we attempt to lay out what we're going to work on for the next five years. And in 2021, we updated that economic development plan, and we brought that before City Council. And there was five main things in that economic development plan that we laid out as goals. It was, number one was to increase population, two was to support existing businesses, three was to get new commercial investment along North Main Street, the Salem-Hoke corridor and National Road, four was to continue redevelopment efforts along North Main Street, including site control and removing blight, and five was implementing Plan Clayton suggestions from the Implementation Committee, based on the recommendations that they brought before City Council in the summer of 2021. So, as I indicated earlier, and I don't know how well this shows up on the screen here, that green over there is super bright. We charted out all of our different goals, and we do that at the very beginning of that five-year economic development plan. And we go year one, year two, year three, year four, year five. We do have overlap, so it's really over about an 18-month time period each year. So, for example, this is May 2022 through December 23. And these were the tasks that we created for year two in that five-year economic development plan in 2021. So, those were the goals, and this is how we've been charting them. And this is how, we do this every year, for every task. We chart on a monthly basis, how are we doing? So, the first one was North Main Street, commercial development and user. We've continued to work on that. We have site control over several parcels of land along North Main Street. As we've discussed here at council, commercial, retail, restaurant redevelopment is very difficult right now because of the economy, because of the after-effects of COVID, because of interest rates. Commercial end-users are trying to figure out what the future of commercial retail looks like. They don't know what the store sizes are going to be. They don't know people are going to order online. They're still trying to figure that out. You talk to any commercial real estate broker, they tell you it's almost zero investment right now, in terms, unless you're dealing with franchise or a national brand or something like that. So that's been difficult. We've been working with a real estate broker on those sites that we control, and we'll continue to do that. North Main Street facade grant program, that was a program we did through CDBG. We did business incentive program, and we finished that off at the end of last year. Plan Clayton Implementation Committee projects, we continue to work on that. We are always working on that. Some of the recommendations that came down that we worked on this past year was implementing the thoroughfare plan, which is under contract and staff's been working with a consultant on. We've been doing park improvements through CDBG and through nature work grants and what have you, also using ARPA funds to put towards those projects. And we've also submitted grants for connectivity projects such as sidewalks along Union Road. So those are all different projects we've been working on. New residential construction begins. We have three projects that are under construction right now. Village of North Clayton, single-family townhouse construction begins. Well, that's an example of us setting a goal two years ago, and we're still working on it. We haven't had any construction for that particular segment of North Clayton, but we're continuing to work with the developer and builders back there. Salem-Hoke Road end-user identified. Well, Roadstar Trucking is under construction along Salem Avenue, so that's moving along. Implementing wayfinding signage. Staff has been working with the staff from Public Works. We've designed the wayfinding signage. We are starting up at the Old Village and Clayton Park at Hardscrabble. Those signs are actually getting ready to be ordered, and we're hoping to start installing those by the end of this year. And finally, Hope Road expansion planning. That is something that the Public Works Department and the Development Department has been working with our engineer. That's still on schedule to break ground fiscal year '25. So, I'm sorry, fiscal year '26, which is summer of '25. That's state's craziest calendar. And we're still on schedule. We're continuing to have meetings. So, that is for year two's goals. Year three, again, this goes from May 23 through December 24. Again, we set these back in '21, and this is where everything stands right now. So, the Salem-Hoke Road commercial construction begins. When we've set those goals, we were hoping in this year, the construction would begin on that project. It has already started. Village of North Clayton, commercial, multi, and family use construction begins. Again, we all know where the status of that is. North Main Street, second end-user. We were hoping, you know, last year we identified an end-user. This year, construction would start. Well, we're still working on that. Second year of Plan Clayton Implementation Projects. Again, those are things we're working on. Begin planning of North Main Street Phase Two streetscape. That is a project that Public Works and Development Department has been working on. We actually were awarded a grant from the state of Ohio, and we are working towards putting that out for bid with an engineer, hopefully, possibly, at the beginning of next year. So, we're moving that along. And that would be putting sidewalks, streetlights in the second phase, pretty much from, is it Hill Grove or Hilltop? I always forget that street. That's across from Meyer. Mr. Gorman, is it Hilltop?
Okay.
No, whatever that street is.
Hill Grove.
Thank you. Down to Heathcliff. So that's that segment. Second new residential development under construction. Again, we have three. And new Clayton Park signage and landscape and final lights. Again, that's something we've been working on, and we're going to move that forward. So, you know, just to get this started, those are the goals we're continuing to work on. Every year builds upon each other. We have goals already set for year four, and we have goals set for year five. Again, piggybacking based on those goals that I just previously laid out. So, where are we at in terms of projects that we've been working on? So, first one, Gran Villas of Clayton. That's the one that's off Hope Road. That's the one that's actually part of Village of North Clayton. That's on the southern side of Village of North Clayton. That was broken up into three phases. The first phase is complete. The second phase is almost complete. And their third phase is under construction right now. They're leasing those up quicker than they can actually build them right now. There's people that have lease agreements on units that haven't even started construction yet. So, and what they're finding is that they're actually leasing out to more young professionals than they previously anticipated. It is still a majority of retirees and seniors that are leasing those out, but they're getting quite a few young professionals. They're getting people from the base. They're getting people from law enforcement. They're getting people at Miami Valley Hospital North that are coming in and leasing those. So, very successful. Hunter's Path, single-family residential community at the northwest corner of Westbrook and Union. Arbor Homes is the builder on that particular one. They have almost 20 houses. They have 20 houses under permit. They have 15 houses that are under construction. They didn't start selling lots until this past spring. So, they have 15 houses under contract since the spring, which, you know, in this particular economic climate with the interest rates that people keep talking about, they're doing pretty well. This particular project, they sell the house before they build it. So, these are houses that are built to the specs of the customer. They are building those on the first phase. The second phase is now currently under construction. You'll see people out there working on the construction of the streets and the infrastructure, detention ponds and what have you. So, that's moving along very well. Wanger Village, Section Three. Everyone knows where that's at, off Wanger Road. That is the last section of Wanger Village. That is a split between patio-style homes and estate-style homes. D.R. Horton's the builder on that one, which is the nation's largest home builder. That project's built, it's the almost exact opposite of Arbor. So, what D.R. Horton does is they build the house, and then they sell the house after they build it. They have almost half their lots under permit already, and they've already sold about four or five houses up there that are completed. They range, they have some of their estate-style houses are almost 4,000 square feet, and then they have patio-style houses such as this model. So, by all accounts, it's going very well right now, and they're hoping to continue to sell those lots as 2024 comes around. Additional residential projects, if you're familiar, well, you guys are familiar, Northwood, the state's, was approved in 2022. We've been working with the developer on that still. That's at the corner of National and Haber. They're working on the final engineering. They still have to come back before City Council for a final development plan. He's also waiting to see what the absorption rate is of this existing single-family construction. So, that's where he's at. And Salem Springs, obviously, was approved earlier this year, and it's currently under referendum. So, that'll go on the ballot in March, and obviously, the developer's holding pat until he sees what the outcome of that referendum is. Along North Main Street. So, you know, that's a high concentration of us, you know, trying to infill empty tenant spaces along North Main Street. We had James Cancer Center, which opened their doors at the beginning of '23. Huge win for the city of Clayton. That was a vacant medical office building. The fact that James Cancer Center chose the city of Clayton for their regional campus is pretty significant. And they've been doing very well since they opened their doors. The industrial growth. We have two parcels along Salem Avenue that are zoned for industrial. This is a six-acre tract right next to the 53-acre. Roadstar Trucking, they've been under construction now for the last several months. And they're hoping to be open for business spring of '24. Commercial site control, that's something we've talked about a lot that was in the economic development plan. We did acquire three properties, begin, end of '22, beginning in '23, Laura's Loft Corner. And then we acquired the former massage parlor, that house that was just to the left. So, we have two acres there in addition to our two other acre lots along North Main Street. As we were talking about a little bit earlier, Laura's Loft is scheduled through the state of Ohio's and Land Bank's demolition program to be demolished by the end of this year. Once that site is demolished and raised and leveled and seeded, all those types of great things, we'll be a lot more aggressive marketing that particular piece of property with our real estate broker. Village of North Clayton. So, along National, commercial investments. Belo Sorella, as you guys are aware, they have submitted a plan to the Planning Commission on the city's outlot at Village of North Clayton, on the corner of Pro Action Drive and National. This is, you know, a great project. And the land use plan, one of the things that came back from the surveys was people wanted independently-owned restaurants, locally grown. Belo Sorella isn't really any more locally grown than you can get. I mean, one of the owners lives in the city of Clayton. Their parents live in the Village of North Clayton. They store their vehicles in the city of Clayton. They really, you know, they love and embrace the city of Clayton. So, to get them to commit to their first brick-and-mortar store at the Village of North Clayton is, in my opinion, a huge get for many, many reasons. It puts a community anchor out of the Village of North Clayton, and we're hopeful that that will continue to spur more investment out there. That planning commission case will be heard at the end of this month, and then City Council will get that at the end of December. So, you know, we were always working on being a pro-business community. You know, again, those are one of the goals of the five-year economic development plan, you know, how do we support local businesses with retention, expansion? We continue to do our local business spotlight video program this year. We added three or four new businesses to that spotlight program. We're continuing to do our monthly Business of the Month Spotlight on social media. We've done business walks. The other thing that we really worked on doing this year was transitioning from Montgomery County being our building department to the city of Clayton being its own standalone building department. And we transitioned to that on January 1st. NIC is our consultant, if you remember. What that means for staff is that even though Seth left in May, and Seth kind of spearheaded that transition and what have you, you know, we continue to have to do that. And Lindsay at the front counter is, Lindsay, without Lindsay, this wouldn't go as smoothly as it does. And I want to give her a shout out because she does an incredible amount of work of doing intake and talking to contractors. And when Lindsay's not here, Barb helps out tremendously as well. So, it's really a team effort from everyone to make this as smooth a transition as it's been. And why is it so important from a development standpoint? Residential plan permits, they are taken in some instances, five to six weeks to get approved. We're turning around residential building permits in three to five days now. Business permits, we're taking sometimes three to six months in Montgomery County. We're able to turn those around in five to 10 business days a lot of times. So, the amount of time that we've cut out of the permit review process is incredible. It also allows us to be involved with the whole entire permitting process. We're aware of what's going on at all times, and we're able to provide better customer service to our businesses and our residents that are applying for residential permits. So, that's been very successful. Community outreach, you know, that's, you guys, I've been here for almost eight years. I preach that economic development stands on the shoulders of community outreach. And one of the things that Plan Clayton did was point out a lot of different opportunities that we had within our parks and green space. Our number-one response in Plan Clayton was that we needed improvements in our parks and open green space. And if you remember, the implementation plan that Plan Clayton has come with identified all sorts of projects that we needed to work on within our parks and green space, in addition to a lot of other things within the city. So, we were very active this year on park improvements. We opened the new pickleball court at Meadowbrook at Clayton in '23. This is, these two pictures, Parks Advisory Commission held a paddle, I'm sorry, a pickleball clinic. We had almost 30, 40 people out there on Saturday morning learning how to play pickleball. If you go by Meadowbrook at any point during the week, there's a good possibility that you're going to see people playing pickleball. During costumes and carving, it was raining outside, and there were six guys out there playing pickleball all day long during the cold rain. So, very popular. It's been very well received. At Northview Park, we did the ribbon cutting for the all-new inclusive playground. This is also a great opportunity to bring the community out together, giving people various types of disability or ability levels, an area that they can all play, and that they can all hang out, and they can all interact with one another. We did the ribbon cutting with City Council members and county commissioners. This was paid for with the CDBG grant, and we also put ARPA funds towards that. This, to me, is just a grand slam in terms of a project for the community. Another great park improvement project we did this year with CDBG grants, also with ARPA funds, was we opened this bathroom at Westbrook Park. It's not a super sexy project, but that restroom facility was closed for 15 years as a result of a fire. And again, this is an example of individuals with disabilities or what have you weren't able to go to the parks a lot of times at Westbrook because we had a porta potty outside, and they weren't able to use those facilities. So, now we have, this restroom facility is ADA compliant. All the paths have been widened to 10 feet, as you'll see here. The picture on the right are the paths. They used to be five feet. Now they're 10 feet. So, individuals with various levels and adaptive equipment can use that equipment. All these paths connect to the restroom facility, so there's no steps or anything like that. We also resurfaced the tennis courts up at Westbrook. We painted, the service department painted all the fencing, and they're striped for tennis and pickleball. And we can put different, if you know anything about pickleball, which I didn't until this year, pickleball nets are shorter than tennis. And so, we have different posts that you can put in for pickleball and for tennis. So, we can get use out of both courts for both types of sports. This is a great project. This, again, was something that was identified in Plan Clayton. Our signage wasn't great in our parks. So, we had the opportunity to partner with students from Miami Valley CTC. Every semester, they're going to work on one identification sign out at the parks, which is just a great project to partner with the kids in the community. This is the first one they did last year. They started it in the fall. They actually finished it this spring because it was their first sign, and they didn't know what went into it. But what they do is the first month of the school year, they work with their teacher to learn about the different masonry skills or what have you, and then they go out, and this is their field exercise or test, if you will. And so, we supply the material, and then they go out there, and the picture in the middle is the students out there working on it. And then, with our sign machine that we purchased here at the city, we make the signage, we put the posts in. The signage, you know, what we're working on really hard is on the backside to have a little bit of the history of the area and the park. We put QR codes because what we hear a lot of times is people don't know where our parks are at. So, now we have QR codes on the back of all the signs that will link people that are there to our website to have directions to the other parks. So, they're working on Westbrook Park, I'm sorry, Northview Park right now. They're hoping to have the base completed here in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll have the new sign face and everything installed. And then, in the spring, we'll start working on Westbrook Park. They just got rid of all of them, too.
They got rid of all of them?
I'm joking. Crazy thing about crawdads is that they reproduce. I'd like to see you out there getting one. Another partnership that we did with students in the community is with the Northmont Art Club. They obviously did the wall mural at Meadowbrook last year. They did the banners along North Main Street for the 25th anniversary. And we're also still working with art students on some other opportunities to do wall murals throughout the city. So, it gets the students engaged, you know, builds a little bit of community pride. And all those things go into community development, which, again, builds upon the economic development aspect of the city. Finally, one of the things Parks Advisory Commission really wanted to concentrate at the end of last year, going into '23, was creating new programs for various types of demographics in terms of age. You know, we did a lot of family and kid stuff, but they wanted to make sure we kind of expanded that at Meadowbrook. So, at the beginning of this year, we had our first Northmont Family Movie Night, which isn't to be confused with movie in a park, which is outside on the driving range. But this is just movie night at Meadowbrook. They watch it on the television. We order Domino's Pizza. Residents come in, and if they want a pizza, they can order or buy the pizza from us at cost. Very successful. We had about 20 or 30 people show up for that. The second picture there is Northmont Dance Party, which has been super successful. We've done three of those events. It's, you know, a good opportunity for the, you know, the demographic, 21-plus, to come out and experience Meadowbrook and see what it's about, but also have a good time. It's free of charge. We do have a cash bar if people want to partake in adult beverages. And then, the last picture is the senior lunch and learn that we do every month, that the Development Department does. We get a project sponsor every month. Usually, it's one of the retirement communities, although we've had local businesses sponsor two of the events this year, and then we have a featured speaker that comes in. This picture is Angie Clifford from the Northmont Chamber talking about things going on in the chamber. So, at this point in time, you know, back in 2016, when we did our first economic development plan, we pointed out that we wanted to do at least one community outreach program a month. Now, we're pushing, you know, we're already doing one a month. We're close to two a month now, so we've expanded that. And those are reasons why living and doing business in the city of Clayton is so great. And, you know, it attracts people and investment into the city. And so, that's, you know, one of the things about those projects. So, and all those things, you know, the Development Department works on. Has the program been successful? Ultimately, you know, we're always trying to rank the program, or is it working? Is it, you know, does it need to be tweaked or what have you? You know, we create the development plan, and then we're constantly looking at it to see if it's been successful. So, from 2016 to 2023, these are all the things we've been able to accomplish. From a metric standpoint, I think you put our community of 16,000, you know, 200, or whatever our population is, against similar-sized communities, I think anyone would take what we've been able to implement over the last seven years. You know, you have all the planning stuff that we did, but we've had approximately $60 million of capital investment in Clayton. Between 2016 and 2021, we had $20 million, which was, it wasn't bad for what we, you know, our size. And then, 2021, we had $17.3 million of capital investment. And we, and from January this year to June of this year, we passed at $17.3 million. Right now, we're close to $24 million for the calendar year of 2023. So, is it successful? Yeah, I think it is successful, but why else is it successful? We've created approximately 400 new jobs. We wrote grants that have been awarded over $4.5 million for public infrastructure and for community development. We've had four new medical office buildings along North Main Street, which is demonstrating $2.5 million. Three new commercial buildings along Salem, one new commercial building along Hope. Three new residential communities have broken ground. There's three additional projects that are in planning stages. All those projects combined, when they're completed, if they get completers, between $50 and $100 million of investment. We have Village of North Clayton, which is, you know, we're still working on that. If that ever gets off the ground, that's another $80, $100 million of investment in the city. We've had over a dozen blighted structures torn down along North Main Street, which was one of the things on the original economic development plan that City Council asked us to do. We transitioned to the Building Department. We've created the Business ME program. And these necks that I'm about to go through are important for the business retention, supporting existing businesses. Create the Business ME program, welcome to Clayton Business Packet, Business of the Month program, Small Business Spotlight video program. We've conducted two business walks along North Main Street. We created the North Main Street Business Incentive Grant. We've created the TED program, which is transformational economic development, which helps with site acquisition and then reinvesting those funds for additional site acquisition. We've created a payroll tax incentive program. We've had four parcels rezoned to industrial along Salem, which was another piece about redevelopment along Salem Avenue. We've acquired close to four acres of commercial land at Village of North Clayton, which is where the Belo Sorella project's going, which is why site control's important. And you guys have approved four new or revised TIF districts for reinvestment in our community. From a staff standpoint, we think it's been very successful, and I think we've demonstrated that throughout the course of this year. And, you know, we're going to continue to work that economic development plan, and that's why we have it, because we work it and we continue to move it forward. So, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments for Jack on this?
I just have one, Jack. We had a five-year plan that went from '15 to '23?
'15 to '21.
'15 to '21?
Yes. Yes. It was '16 to '21. I'm sorry. I misspoke. No. No.
Anything else from the council or our staff?
Are we at a point where we need to update our development plan?
No, so we're only at the end of year two of the second five-year economic development plan. So, '16 through '21 was the first five years, and then we created a new one in '21, which, I'll show you the years. And it's confusing. It's because honestly, what happened was we did the first one in May of '16. So, it is a project item on year five. So, May of 2023 is what started year three. So, we're like, then you have year two, which goes through the end of this year. Because again, it's really 18 months. And again, I'd like to say we made it complicated on purpose, but we made it complicated on accident, honestly. It was just because of where we started.
Do you see any struggles, or what struggles do you see going forward from this point?
Well, there's a lot of struggles.
2023 going forward as far as economic situation overall and other influences?
I think it's a similar challenge that we had last year. And this is something that City Council and the community is going to need to figure out. You know, what's the direction that we want to go? What's the identity that we want to have? Those are the things that we're going to have to come to terms with. That's the challenge. The unknowns of what exactly we are right now has already resulted in difficult conversations I'm having with developers and builders right now. They don't know, you know, if it's worth their investment of time and resources to look at city of Clayton right now. So, that's the biggest challenge. We have a lot of opportunity for us, though, in terms of our location, our demographics, our income level, our corridors, our proximity to a lot of things. Those are all things that lend itself to positive development. Another challenge that we have is the fact that our levy didn't pass. How does that impact our level of service going forward? How does that impact community outreach programming? You know, I mean, if we don't have the resources to do those things, those things go away. If our level of service goes down, our community becomes less attractive for investment. So, those are, you know, those two things are the biggest challenges that I see from, in terms of development, are things that we're going to have to tackle, and we're going to have to figure out, and we're going to have to figure that out as a community. And from City Council, you know, what are we? What do we want to be? Because the level of service continues to go up, and that's just a fact of the matter. Service level costs are not going to go down unless we make cuts. So, we either have to bring more resources in to pay for those services, or we have to make difficult decisions. And some of those things are, you know, different services, you know, community outreach, you know, that's not a vital, that's not, I mean, to me, it's vitally important for development. But is it an essential service mandated by the state of Ohio? No, it's not. Police and fire, like, those are your essential services that we have to provide. We have an obligation to provide those services. So, what's important to the city? What's important to the community? Those are things that we need to figure out. And, you know, some of those things are out of our control. Some of those things that we, you know, we have to wait and see what the public decides. And, you know, whatever they decide's fine, but we have to realize that with that comes difficult decisions on the back end of things. Because ultimately, you know, we're not in it to make money. We're in it to raise enough resources to be able to pay for the services and to provide an environment where people want to live and do business. And the only way you have that environment is if you're continually reinvesting in these types of programs, and you're reinvesting in infrastructure improvements and improving your police and your fire department, you know, with the technology that they need and the resources that they need to provide the highest level of services. If we can't pay for those things, then the quality of service goes down. That's the reason development's important, but that's also the reason why I'm always preaching to you guys, community development and economic, because you need it all. You have to have it all. Because if you don't, if you have no community development, I promise you, your economic development's going to go down. And if you have no economic development, your community development's going to go down. I mean, it's, they go together. That's why they're essentially, with smaller communities, they're one and the same. But, so those are your challenges. But despite those challenges, Mr. Merkel, I think we have tons of opportunity here. I mean, we have a lot of positive things going on. Everything I just went through, a lot of communities don't have that. And what we've been able to successfully put in place, people appreciate, investors and builders, they love the fact that we got rid of Montgomery County as our building department, and we're working with NIC now. They tell us that all the time. Our residents like those community programs. They love all the different services that the city of Clayton provides. Those are things that people talk to one another about. They talk to their family members and their friends about when they're looking to relocate or move into a new community. So, those types of services are very important. But, you know, again- But, you know, again, not to bemoan the fact, but, you know, the fact that the school levy didn't pass is going to be a challenge also. Because your communities are only as strong as your schools. And as, you know, that's outside of our control, but from a development side, you know, that scares the hell out of me. Because if your school starts to have to cut services, people are going to look at other school districts to send their families. I mean, I can tell you personally, you know, when that school levy failed, one of the first things my wife said is, said, is it time to move? Because if they can't provide the level of service that our kids, that we believe our children need, then we're going to look elsewhere. And that's a fact. And that's just, you know, you look at your communities that are struggling with redevelopment and development efforts, I guarantee you, most of them have weak school systems. And the communities that are doing really well, they have strong school systems. So, and again, that's not a challenge for us, but that is a challenge for development in the future. And I'm sure all those things get worked out. But those are things, you know, when developers come in and they talk to us, I guarantee you one or two question, how's your school system? And they already know, they've researched it, but they want to hear about more of the in-depth stuff and some of the extracurriculars that are offered and stuff like that. So that's going to be a challenge here for the next six to 12 months. You know, how do we deal with that? How do we address those questions?
I think our, I think our biggest challenge to get on what Jack was saying is that we need to increase the revenues. I think the cutting, I think, you know, us that are familiar with the budget, you know, I think you're going to find very little to cut. And I go back to the old adage, you know, whether it's business or government or whatever, you know, entity you're talking about, you can't cut your way to prosperity. You just don't do it. Because, you know, if we had a lot of fat to cut, I would say, let's cut it. But we don't have that. We are, we're already pretty thin, I would say. And so I think our job as a council and our staff is to, is to continue to look for ways to generate more revenue and let's, I don't want to look at the cuts. I mean, we may have to do that at some point, but we really need to work on getting more revenues.
I think, I agree with what you said, but, you know, planning for 2024, I guess, I want to hit on a couple of things that were in Amanda's notes, because like Jack said, it goes hand in hand with economic development, in my opinion. The community outreach events, did we get a breakdown of how much each event cost that you projected to cut?
Most of it comes in staff time, is what we're, is what it is. So staff salaries, because a lot of the things that we receive are donations, but then you have the electricity and the staffing of Meadowbrook as well, when we have those events, because most of the events we hold are at Meadowbrook.
I mean, the Labor Day, just, just the fireworks and the stuff that we buy for Labor Day is approximately about $20,000. And then you have the overtime staff, which is like, I think pushes like between the fire and the police, I think it's like close to 40, I mean, 40,000. So that program right there, $60,000.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big chunk.
Absolutely. What about leaf pickup? I mean, what does that cost?
It's about, almost $11,000 a week for leaf pickup. And that's for fuel, mechanical stuff, trucks, the leaf machines, staff time. And then you also have to bear in mind that while the guys are on the leaf machines for seven weeks out of the year, they're not doing anything but leaves. So there are other projects that they could be doing in the city that they're not. And before we go too far down this rabbit hole, you know, I'm happy to talk about things that are proposed to be cut and we can do that when we get to that portion in the agenda. I don't want to bog down Jack's presentation with that. And then we have the full budget presentation at the next meeting. So that'll give council an opportunity to see what we have planned for full cuts or programs that we don't plan on implementing next year.
Yeah.
And then gives you two weeks to look at it and make any, decide on any changes that you'd like to see.
Okay, so we'll be voting on it the 21st?
Yes, it'll be the second meeting in December.
Because I won't be here on the December 7th, we'll be out of town. And, you know, I know we had some back and forth with emails. It was stated, maybe we should have this conversation. I wouldn't mind doing it during your city manager's comments, but I would agree, a lot of it does go with economic development.
It absolutely does.
So we can, I can wait until the city manager's report, though.
No, I guess from what I was trying to get at was, you know, moving forward, what does the council persons, ourselves, would be needed from us to help things as far as making a more visible commentary as far as what's, what's needed as far as going forward on a positive sense? You know, if it means open forum meeting or something as far as whatever, as far as inviting the public in to discuss some of this stuff, as far as, you know, what to make more of, just maybe an informal conversation in terms of what's, what's going on and why and what and where we're at, just to have a conversation. Since this seems to be one of the things that people were saying in the past was, okay, you guys aren't involving us. Well, fine, let's involve them. You know, bring them in and, you know, have your comments and let's, you know, see what everybody else has to say and, you know, if they have a comment or complaint, you know, offer up your comments, let's see what you have to say and see where it goes. And if you have a question or a concern or suggestion, you know, put it on the table. And I think, you know, we have some time to work with this as far as our budget structure for going in for two years from now. And I think, you know, now is the time to start working on some of this stuff from that standpoint to make inroads. Because, I mean, I don't think any of us are in, set up for doing battle to fight, you know, tooth and nail for things. I think we want to try to bring people in and have it be understood essentially what's what and why.
No, I, you know, and I think one of the great things about Clayton is that, you know, historically speaking, you know, I think we work well with everyone. So I think trying to figure out a solution to, you know, a few of those questions where, you know, there might be a divide in the community, I think it's important to figure that out. And realizing, you know, we're not going to ever have 100% agreement on anything, but those conversations have to be had so that there's at least consensus and an understanding of where we're going. And that helps staff understand, so we're not spinning our wheels on things, because staff is, you know, working on what we believe that we're supposed to be doing. And again, there's no benefit to things getting spilled out all over, you know, the newspapers and stuff, you know, it reflects poorly on us. So if there's a way that city council can work with the public on, you know, trying to build, you know, some of those open lines of communication, I think that's definitely beneficial.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of commentary that was made that we're operating in a vacuum, that we're not being transparent with a lot of things and that we're doing things, you know, kind of a clandestine manner, which, like, I have no idea where that commentary is coming from, because I haven't experienced anything that would say anything is clandestine or not upfront. I think everybody in here has been pretty open in terms of discussions and comments. So I just, I just want to put a lot of that stuff to bed from the standpoint, the stuff that gets shot through social media, it's like, you know, I don't have time to waste on social media, because it's nothing but a crap trap.
That's a great point, Greg. And I think, you know, us having this conversation, if we could have a preliminary conversation, like Amanda said, during the city manager's portion, I think it would be a good starting point for just us as council, just so we can hash a couple of things out publicly before the first budget hearing. So I think it would, you know, at least give Jack and Amanda some direction as to what we're thinking before the actual budget workshop.
I did, I have a question for you, Jack. We at council met with a number of staff to develop goals for what we want to do in economic development. How do you think we're doing on the objectives that we set them?
I think we're doing well. I think we're doing really well. I mean, I'm proud of what we've been able to accomplish. I mean, I'll put our record up against anyone's, especially with a community our size and with the limited resources we have, the investment that we've been able to attract into, into the city of Clayton, I think we're doing really well in economic development. I know we're doing well, when you look at the, just the metrics of capital investment, all those types of things. But when you have other communities that reach out, I mean, that are asking us, how did you do this program? What do you want, I mean, Kevin just met with Miami Township this week about our JED and about the incentive program and the JED. I get people on a monthly basis from other communities reaching out and saying, man, we want to do exactly what you're doing. You know, there's communities all around there now putting in all-inclusive playgrounds. When, I used to, you know, go to different things, Centerville, of all places, Centerville would say that they like to, you know, they joke around that they're the Clayton in the South. Because every project that they, that we were doing, they ended up doing about six months later. So when you have other communities copying what you're doing and the way that you're going about doing it, you know, imitation's the highest form of flattery. So I think we're doing pretty, pretty well. And I'm proud of everything that we've been able to accomplish and I put it against anyone.
And specifically, I mean, if council recall, in the objectives that you set forth for staff, I mean, specifically you had diversified housing options and community amenities to attract a more diversified population, i.e. young families, while also supporting older community members so they can age in place. So, you know, one of the goals was to develop North Clayton. We're getting hopefully an anchor business out there and hopefully get it off the ground by 2023 is the goal. Complete one new community amenity project, the development department's knocked it out of the park with amenity projects this year. And then establish one new community event targeted at a population segment. They started the lunch, or development started the lunch and learn project this year. So I think Jack's right. I think that staff has kind of been in step with what council has wanted.
Is Bellisarella's plans still tentative on receiving donated land?
It is. And we'll have that to council in a few weeks, probably the beginning of, end of December, beginning of January, to discuss with council.
And that's the donation of, was it three acres or?
Well, the structure isn't completely a donation, it's...
So you weren't here when we discussed this. It was, it's a forgivable loan structure so that the property values in the area will continue to stay. It won't have a negative impact on the property values and it puts skin in the game from, on their side. There'll be certain benchmarks in terms, including investment level, employee levels.
A forgivable loan just for the land?
Yes.
And I apologize for looking at you like you were crazy. I forgot that you weren't here at the last meeting.
Yeah, and it's structured very similarly to what a lot of neighboring communities